Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for March 26, 2019. We welcome, as always, our friends from the local cable channel. And tonight, we have a number of matters to take up. The first of which is the approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting of February 26, 2019. I have reviewed those minutes and have edited them as appropriate, correcting basically grammatical in syntax errors, and have passed those on to each of the individual board members. Have you received the minutes that I've sent you, board members?
I have.
Yes.
I have one change. On the very last page, there's no E on my name.
Well, we must correct that. We will delete the E.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Does anyone else have any changes, amendments, or modifications they'd like to make?
I'm good.
Okay.
Nope, it's on the second page, too.
Well, then, we'll correct double Es. Other than that, do we have any further comment with regard to these meeting minutes?
Motion to accept.
Wait, here a second. Okay. Any further commentary? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
All right. So those meeting minutes are accepted now as written but for the deletion of two Es in Allen's name. Thank you for your eagle eye there, Allen. Next, we have two case hearings tonight. The first of which is, and I'm going to take these out of order, Public Hearing Case Number 1-8, the petitioner being Thomas J. Capranella Family Trust, appealing the issuance of building permit number 2018-425 to demo and reconstruct a single-family residence for property located at 14 Andrews Point Road in Carver, which is Assessor's Map 1-Lot 8 pursuant to Section 5223 of the Carver zoning bylaws. Now, I want the board to know that I received a letter as I came in the meeting room tonight, dated today's date, March 26, from Lawrence Winneker of Serkey &amp; Kelman. And he writes, "This office represents Jerry Jeffrey Merritt et al. regarding the above appeal of the issuance of a building permit on 14 Andrews Point Road by Thomas J. Capranella Family Trust. Attorney Richard M. Serkey of this office, who represents Mr. Merritt, is ill, and we are requesting a continuance to your next meeting, to which Attorney Edward Angley, who represents Capranella, has," he says, "has concerted." I think he meant to say "has consented." "Please advise the date of the continued hearing." Now, I observe Mr. Angley to be present in the audience. I take it that you represent Capranella individually? Is that true?
I represent the family.
You represent the family, and Serkey represents the trust. Is that correct?
He represents the builder who got the permit. I represent the appellant.
Okay. Well, Serkey says he represents Mr. Merritt.
Right, that's one of the...
That's one of the builders.
Right. And you are representing Capranella. I got it now. Okay. So it's customarily the case that when illness intervenes, that we grant these requests for continuance. Does anyone have a different idea?
I'm fine.
Do I hear a motion to allow the continuance to our next hearing date, which we will determine momentarily?
So moved.
So moved, and Eric seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
So it is continued to our next hearing date. So let's discuss when that will be. Because, ladies and gentlemen of the board, we have two new cases that are in the pipeline. So regardless of the fact that this one needed to be continued, we would have to meet again soon anyway to take up the two new matters. So let's see what we can do about this. Anyone have any dates they want to suggest?
I'll be able to state from the 15th to the 23rd, so...
What month?
April.
April, 15 to 23.
Yeah, so the 3rd and 4th.
How about the 9th?
The April 9th is... What day of the week is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Do we have enough time for notice of the two public hearings?
You know, I think it would be pretty tight.
Yeah, I don't think we have enough time.
I think it's going to have to come after your...
It's going to be the 30th.
So the 30th of April?
That works for me.
What day of the week is the 25th?
25th is a Thursday.
Thursday. I can't do Thursday.
And the 30th is what day of the week?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay. So how about April 30th?
Works for me.
Allen, is that good for you? Allen, without a me?
Yeah.
And Fran?
Yep.
Okay. So our next hearing date will be April 30th.
Thank you.
And if there are any submissions that anybody would like to make in advance of that, please make sure that you send them in so that the board has an opportunity to at least get them into the file, and perhaps, if we're especially ambitious, a chance to review them in advance. Okay, so...
And also, if there's anyone here from the public that wish to be heard, you will not receive another notice of this case. So this is the only notice you'll get, other than it's on the public hearing postings, for those who received, like, the certified letters.
Okay, we all good?
I assume it's 7:00 PM.
Your assumption is correct.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
A point. I picked up the same thing you did on the consent of the word.
Yes.
And I checked with Larry, one of her, and he told me to look it up in the dictionary. Apparently, that word means the same thing.
No kidding?
Yeah.
Well, that's a new one on me.
Was a new one on me, too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you again.
Good to see you.
Can I have that one?
Okay.
Steve?
Yes. Put it back in the file.
I'll just make a copy of it before I leave.
Oh, sure. Okay. Are we going too fast, or are we good?
No.
All right. The next matter is a public hearing which was continued. This is case number 75-31-AR, the petitioner being Rebecca Flaherty of 66 Holmes Street in Carver. The petitioner is requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2230 of the Carver zoning bylaw and 6.1 of the Town of Carver bylaws. So it's zoning bylaw and town bylaw for property located at 66 Holmes Street in Carver, which is at Assessor's Map 75-31-AR, to allow a commercial kennel on property that is less than five acres, as required in a residential agricultural district. Now, as I said, we had a previous hearing on it. The hearing was opened, and considerable evidence was taken at that time. That was at our last meeting, which was on February 26. And this past Saturday, which was March...
23rd.
What?
23rd.
23rd. We went to the site, and all board members but for Ms. Mello, who's already familiar with the site anyway, were present. All board members that are here tonight were present but for Ms. Mello. And we were shown around most graciously by Ms. Flaherty, and we appreciate the opportunity to interrupt your privacy on a Saturday morning. Seems like whenever we go on these site visits, the weather is terrible, isn't it?
Yeah. Correction, I wasn't out initially at the meeting, but I went by.
Okay.
I didn't stop at the property, but I did join.
Okay. Well, thank you for correcting me on that.
Yep.
I don't know how I could have forgotten that you weren't there. But in any event, thank you for your hospitality and your patience with us. And I want to ask, before the board members make their comments or ask any questions, whether, Ms. Flaherty, you have anything further that you'd like to tell us?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So Ms. Flaherty apparently believes that she has presented her case to us based on the February 26 testimony, and I ask the board members now for their comments or questions. Who wants to lead off? We all understand what the petitioner is asking for here, right?
Yes.
And why she is requesting the relief that she is requesting, right? The property is undersized. All right. Who wants to start?
Well, what caught my attention when I went by the property, there's not a lot of vegetation that butts the bogs in the side streets, so noise, dogs barking, will carry.
Yeah. Then there will be a stocky fence around the kennel itself, and there'll also be a... I'm also going to be putting up a stocky fence around the property itself to help diminish some of that noise.
Will the dogs be kept in the kennel at night, or are they going to be brought in?
At night, they will be in my kennel. Unfortunately, I don't have a room inside the house for everybody, otherwise I would. There will be quite a few dogs that are inside the house. But during the day, I will be out there most of the time, out working, doing... working with training and getting them out so that they get enough exercise and socialization.
And how... How many areas in the kennel do you have for the dogs? You said some of the dogs are going to be in the house, some of the dogs are going to be in the kennel.
Yeah, there are 11 kennels inside there, and then I have... The reason I wanted the amount that I want is because I have two of my own personal dogs that won't have anything to do with it. So there will be up to seven dogs inside the house, whether it be my adults or my training dogs.
But if you receive a commercial license, you can have as many dogs, as many as 20 dogs, because that's what a commercial license covers.
Correct.
And that does not include any dogs that are under four months old?
Correct.
So it could be more than that?
Yes, until they're eight weeks old. They'll be... Once they're... Once we figure out who has the personality for the service dog training and for any other jobs that we feel that they would be... That they would fit with. But yes, there will be... There will be more than 20 dogs at some times, but not all the time.
Mr. Mueller, anything further?
So minus your two dogs, so you'd have...
I...
So you'd have 18 other dogs plus your two.
Up to 18.
Yeah.
But not all the time.
Ms. Mello, anything further by way of questions at this point?
No. Your house is abutted... You're... So you're on a corner.
Yes.
You're on a corner. And then there's neighbors directly across the street?
Correct.
And directly next to you. And then behind you are the open box.
All right, okay.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman. I just have a comment when we're all done.
Ms. Clark, any questions?
This is kind of a tough one.
Questions first.
I'm going in.
Okay. I thought you were going to get into some editorializing.
No.
Okay.
Have you thought of not starting so large? In that you're not an experienced breeder yet, bringing in... Or... I mean, you can have up to five. So that could be two breed, you know, a stud and two females, along with your two, with a limited number of litters a year.
I did think about that, but I can have up to five, yes. I have two already, so that brings me down to three. And because I want to do first and second generation with golden doodles, that would...
So, and the plan is...
Your name is?
Oh, sorry. My name is Ann Flaherty. I'm Rebecca Assessor.
Hi, Adam.
Oh, I...
I stay happy with us.
Thank you very much. So the plan is, it's not going to happen overnight where we would have, you know, 20 dogs on the property. It's definitely a lot of trial and error. We'd want to start slow, move up, but that would just cover the entirety of the plan, if you will. So not...
There won't be that many dogs at the beginning. Either way, if I only did the five, I can't do any training dogs. I have enough room for a stud, a bitch, and one puppy that I could do training with. A hobby license, I have to get the same thing. I have to get a variance because it's the same five acres for a hobby kennel and for a commercial kennel. My reasoning for going for the commercial is because that is what I want to end at. That is where... That is my end goal. So if I have to get the variance for either one, what I... I would rather go for the commercial now and then not have to come back and apply for a commercial kennel after applying for a hobby kennel, because it's more money that I have to pay out.
I guess what I'm asking is that, in that you have a support staff, you have trainers that you're working with and a breeder that you're working with, but you don't have anything of your own that you can show us as a breeder. We've had other hobby kennelists and commercial kennelists come before us, and they've been in business for years. They have, you know, their licensing and their... They bring us a long list of sizes and things like that. So they've shown us something proven as a reason to expand what they already have. You have virtually no experience in this, on your own, in this location, and you're asking for the biggest thing the town can grant you on a house lot that wouldn't even be suitable for a single-family home under our current zoning. You know, you need 60,000 square feet for a house. Yours is 51. And that's... And that's where I see there's some difficulty. I mean, I don't know if you can start extremely small and train one dog and have a group of litters over a course of a time.
I'm trying to make a living.
I understand.
I've worked with animals since I was 14 years old. Have I done breeding? No. But I do have a huge support system behind me, and...
One of the things that the board always takes into consideration, not just in kennel cases, is whether the action that we take here establishes a precedent in the town so that if we grant a request for a variance, or if we grant a request for a special permit, that that could be used against us in the next case where someone is looking for a variance or a special permit. Now, when we talk about variances and special permits, well, especially variances, we're talking about allowing someone to break the law, right? The law in the Town of Carver is that you have to have five acres. That's the law. So you have done everything right by coming in here and presenting your case and asking us in good faith to break that law. And in allowing variances, as I said, this could establish precedent for the next case that comes down the pike. As Ms. Clark says, you have to have an acre and a half to build a single-family house in the town. And this space that you say you want to use for the kennel is even smaller than that. Now, I think that you are extremely well-intentioned. I think that at some point, whether it's through this petition, or at a different location, or at a different time, you're going to be successful. I can feel that passion that you have and the motivation that you have to do this. So for me, speaking only for myself, I sit here in the middle, but I only have one vote, and everybody else, as you know, has their own minds here and speak them. For me, that's not an issue with you. The issue is the limitation of the size of the property that you want to use to conduct this business. It is undeniably small. So this is not about, for me, maybe it is for others here, I know based on what Ms. Clark said, it is an issue that she's identified. For me, it's not your qualifications or lack of experience, such as it is. That's not it. What it's... That's not what's going on in my head with you. So it's not personal. It's size-related for me. And I need to think about that and get over that, and it's hard. If you are closer to the five acres in size, but this is really less than half of the requirement of the law, and less than the size that it would require for a single-family home to be built. Allen, I know you had a comment.
This is the... For me, this is the worst part of the job, because I hate this. I absolutely hate it. This is not what I want to do. The problem we have, and I agree with the chairman, if you had four and a half acres and you were looking for a break from the five, you're asking for a 76% reduction in the bylaw. And exactly, you'd need a variance to put a house on that lot, let alone... So the problem that happens is not whether you should do this or not. The problem for me comes in the next guy that walks through the door, and the guy behind him, and Stephen's 100% right, this sets a horrific... You might as well throw the bylaws out, because it starts to set the precedent that everything's going to require a variance, to the point that variances become every day and nothing unique about them. I, honest to God, I'd be thrilled to no end if you could tell me that we could do this with five or six, seven dogs, and you come back and do a hobby thing, and maybe we can give a little bend on that. All I can think of is 20 dogs in the dead of the summer and the potential for 20 puppies under four months old, and that's a lot of animals on a very confined area, even though the bogs are out back and the neighbors can love you to death right up until this becomes a real problem. And then those very same neighbors may very well come back to this board for relief that we're unable to grant, because... Do you know what I'm saying? I've been stewing on this since the site visit, honest to God. I walked around your yard, and I looked, and I tried to figure a way to turn this into something, and I couldn't come up with the numbers. I just couldn't. The reduction is too great, in my estimation. I know it's not what you wanted to hear. I'm so sorry that I'm upsetting you. That's not my intent. I didn't want this to be this way. But to grant a 76% reduction in the required zoning just tells the next guy who wants an 85% reduction, well, you did it for Holmes Street. Or if he wants less than a 76%, it's going to be an automatic in his mind, because, well, what the heck, I'm only asking for half, and you gave them... So now you have no choice but to grant it to me. And if we turn that down, then we go to court, and the judge looks at it and says, well, you did it for them. What's the problem? So this just opens a can of worms.
And ask for variance for a hobby kennel?
I'm sorry?
Was it worth it for me to come back and ask for a variance for a hobby kennel?
I can't give you legal advice, but what I can tell... What I think I can say to you, based on what you're hearing, at least from the members to my right, is that maybe you need to switch paths here and consider something less complex and smaller in size, because you have a small lot. Ms. Mello?
I agree with Mr. Germaine that in the summer, when people are out in their yards and the dogs are barking, and they're trying to... The neighborhood's tight, and they're trying to have a picnic in the backyard with their family, and the dogs are noisy. My in-laws had a kennel in Rainham, and so I am not against kennels. But the neighborhood is not conducive to what you want to do.
How about the Mueller report? It's now...
No, that was my concern, was the lot. I mean, you're obviously passionate about the dogs, and, you know, this is a career, which is good. Going big, going home, I mean, I think you start off on a smaller scale and go a little bit larger and see how things work out, and then maybe at another point, you guys end up, you know, maybe it's a different lot at some point down the line, a larger kennel. But that size lot with that number of dogs, it's a lot.
I want to reiterate what I said before, Rebecca, if I can call you Rebecca. And I want you to take this to heart. For me, this is not about you personally, or your abilities with the animals, or what your goals are, including your intention to try to make some money at this. I'm perfectly fine with all that, and I'm perfectly fine with you. Okay? But I think what you're hearing from the board members is a reluctance to grant you the requested relief because of the size of the lot, more than anything else. So I want to throw something out to you and see whether this grabs you or not. We can vote on this and decide up or down. Or, based on what you've heard tonight, you can decide to withdraw your request and then come back before us at another time if you see fit with a smaller plan that might meet the concerns of the collective board members that you've heard tonight. Sometimes it's a good idea, and I'm not trying to lead you one way or the other here, but sometimes it's a good idea not to force us to come to a vote, but rather just withdraw based on the input you've gotten and maybe try a different path.
I'd like to withdraw.
And I want to, before you tell me that again, I want to give you the opportunity to speak to your husband about it, and I'm happy to take a brief suspension so that you can chat with him and consider it without making an emotional decision.
I'd like to withdraw.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The only other thing, and if I may?
You may, of course.
This, honest to God, Rebecca, this has nothing to do with dogs and kennels. This has nothing to do with, and I agree with the chairman, I agree with everybody, this has nothing to do with your ability or inability. That never came into the picture. My decision and my opinion to this was based solely on how much are we going to bend the rule and where that takes us. I sit on a different board in town, and we're always concerned with the precedent. And that's... That comes back and it bites us if we're not careful. This makes it even worse. So this... To me, it didn't matter if you were trying because of having dogs, or you could have been trying to put used cars. It didn't make a difference. To me, it was all about, this is the lot size, this is what we're asking for, this is the number reducing it by, and where does that leave us? And that's what it had to do with. I couldn't... I couldn't agree with the chairman more. I think it's a good idea for... This is the... Rather than have us vote to withdraw this, my own idea, but to withdraw this, come up with a Plan B and then come back at it from a different angle. I think that is in your best interest. I think this board is bending over backwards to try to make you feel better. We don't want you taking it personal. We don't want you thinking it's about dogs. We don't think any of that. We don't think it's because you can't do a good job. I think the passion you have for what you're trying to do is awesome. I just think you're stuck in a small spot looking for too big a thing to happen. And that's not your fault either.
I wonder, Rebecca, and I'm just throwing this out, whether there's another spot in town where you might be able to conduct these operations. It would be larger than the undersized lot, which is the subject of this petition. You're shaking your head no. Have you looked around? Not yet? Well, that might be something to think about doing. There's a couple of different ways to skin a cat. You can either start much smaller or maybe find a different location in town where you have that space. And we have a lot of space in town, open space. So just throwing that out there is a possibility. Okay? So the petitioner has requested that she be allowed to withdraw, and I would suggest that that request be without prejudice.
Absolutely.
Which would allow you to come back in and file a new petition at some point. Okay? Does anybody want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion that...
She be allowed to withdraw without prejudice?
...our case number 75-31-AR be allowed to withdraw for petition without prejudice.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So you are withdrawn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And good luck. I observe in our board files that there is no correspondence other than the correspondence on that previous case that I read into the record. Is there anything further that any board member would like to discuss at this time by way of new business? Not seeing that anybody or hearing that anybody wants to discuss anything further. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
I think we have new business.
Well, your comment is probably new, right?
I'd like to applaud this board tonight for the compassion and for the ability to make this a little bit easier on this applicant. She had a tough time tonight with this. And I think personally, my hat's off to the way this was conducted tonight to make it easy and not push this to a final vote. I think this was in her best interest, and I think that it's the best we could have come up with for her. And I think that I applaud this board for that decision.
Does anyone else have anything further? Ms. Clark, are you good?
I'm good.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody.